Lisa, if you're ready to go, I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, today is the 3rd of May 2021. My name is Steve Jeskowicz. I'm the chairman of the Town of Leger Permanent Municipal Building Committee. And this meeting is being held by Zoom and being recorded for posting on the town's website. And at this point, I called the meeting in order. It's 5:01 PM. We'll start out with a roll call. We'll start out with the committee and then others that have joined us. Steve Jeskowicz, Chair.
Tuminsky, Member.
Gary Schneider, Member.
Kate Tappamaher, Board of Ed, Member.
Wayne Donaldson, Board of Education.
Dan Hetzler, ONG.
Steven June, Silver Petrocelli.
Mark Jeffco with ONG.
Chris Rizzi, ONG.
Okay, I think that takes care of everyone. We do have a quorum. I have four voting members assigned. So we'll go ahead and get started with the agenda. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from April 26, 2021. We did have a quorum, but we did table a few things there. So at this moment, I will entertain motions to approve the meeting of a special minutes of a special meeting of 26 April.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Tuminsky. Do I hear a second?
Gary Schneider, Second.
Say my Mr. Schneider, any discussion of the minutes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes as written, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Gary Tuminsky, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappamaher, Bye.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it and the motion, the minutes are approved. All right, looking at our agenda here, I said, we're gonna do things a little bit of a different order so we can get some up. And anything that Kate has to be at, give her a few minutes to prepare. Kate, is that the, is that the facilities meeting for the Board of Ed or a different meeting?
It's diversity and inclusion.
Okay, no problem.
Dialed in, I believe it might be John. Is that you?
Yes, it is.
It's John. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and look at the participants. All right, he's the 9130 number, got it. Okay, so with that, moving back onto our agenda, I'm gonna reorder a few things, the agenda, but we'll take care of everything. So the next item up is citizens' comments. Looking at the participants, I don't see anyone else online. So I'll go ahead and pause for a few seconds here and make sure that there's no citizens that wish to make a statement. Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on with the agenda. As far as informational items go, I'll just make a couple of quick comments. First of all, we still have outstanding seats on the, on the PME seat. One to be named by the town and one to be named by the Board of Ed, in this case, with school projects. So if you know people that are active in the town, that have the right type of skill set and are interested in the committee, please let those individuals come forward and I'll help point them in the right direction of who they need to speak to to be nominated. The next item is next week, and I believe the meeting is on the 10th, but I have to double check that. There's gonna be a meeting in the mayor's office between the superintendent of schools, myself, I believe Wayne Donaldson will be there. Anthony Favre's been invited, the mayor and the chairman of the town council to discuss the school projects and our way forward. One of the items that's gonna come up in that discussion is the, the RFP draft that I put out to you. Others will be funding of the projects, closeout of the projects, punch list items and other things. So that meeting will be held face to face in the mayor's office, but I believe there will be a dial-in for that as well.
That's Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 11th.
Thanks, Wayne. I didn't have too many windows open. I couldn't get over my other calendar. Actually, it has to be the 11th because I'm out of town on the 10th. So yeah, it is the 11th. Say again, you broke up.
What time will that be at?
2:30.
2:30, that's correct.
Thank you.
So with that, the next item on the agenda I'd like to move to is I wanted to discuss item 7.2 quickly before we go through the change orders. And then we're gonna go back into our full 7.1, which will include the punch list items. Lisa, were you, you were able to distribute the copies of the draft RFPQ to the members, is that correct?
Yes, they should have gotten them.
Okay, for those of you that are on the call now, did any of you have any questions about that? Because my goal here, under possible action, would be to, to get concurrence to send that off to the finance director for review. Ensure that it meets all of our town requirements and be able to release that in the next, before our next meeting. So with that, I'll open the floor for any comments on the RFP RFQ.
Steve, I just have one basically. Possibly what we may want to do, since this may take years to be finalized, the audit. Whoever we select, write a brief narrative of what they did. So when somebody picks this up in the future years, it doesn't have any idea of what went on necessarily. They have a little bit of a roadmap to start them in the right direction.
I think, I think that's a good idea, Jerry, and I think, you know, hopefully this will be kind of self-explanatory when they, we have this massive PDF document with links and everything to other files that, that the front matter will explain, you know, even just on a page or two, the history of the project, and then it will get into, here's the records of the project based on the state's guidelines for audit. And then whether it takes two years or it takes seven years, that file will be available on the town servers as well as we'll have the original on DVD or whatever it is. And that's what we send to the state because once we're done and we paid all the bills and put everything on the shelf, there should not be any changes to that for years in the future until the state decides to audit it. Does that make sense?
No, I was asking is saying is if, it could be 10 years, the last time I heard. We don't want somebody to have to start from ground zero necessarily, that's all. Just a narrative of what is going on. Some of us may not be around, I don't mean that negatively, but we may not remember some of what went on during this process, that's all.
Understand, there's already things we've probably forgotten this process, even though we've been on the project the whole time. Gary, Kate, do either of you have any comments on this? But Wayne, I'm, we're gonna, you and I are gonna, we talked about this already, we'll talk again. So with that, my intentions are to forward it to the town finance director for ensure that it meets all the town purchasing requirements for inclusion. And with that, at this point, I'm asking for, and we'll get a vote here, to be able to then release that RFP between now and our next meeting. And, you know, I'll work with the town finance director to fill in the blanks for dates, things are doing, things like that. But, and hopefully we'll get several responses to that so we can, we can sort through those. My fear is we may only get one or two. My bigger fear would be we get none, and then we'll have to regroup. But, so with that, I move that we, and Lisa, you'll have to attach that copy of the draft RFP to these meeting minutes. Authorization to forward the draft RFP to the town finance director for review and then release in accordance with the bidding instructions for the town, that'll include publishing it in the newspaper and on the state of Connecticut's website. And with minor changes authorized to, to meet the town requirements. That motion's been made.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Tuminsky. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Gary Tuminsky, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappamaher, Bye.
Yeah, with that, the eyes have it. And I have no idea whether this is gonna come back in this terms of cost, but the good news is that, you know, we can always elect not to award it to anyone. I don't want to influence any of those bids on what the cost is by discussing potential cost. And I think it's the best way to approach that. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move on on the agenda. Keeping with trying to get through the things we had to vote on prior to Kate Tappamaher coming off, I'm gonna go ahead now and ask ONG, Dan Hetzler, to go ahead and discuss each of the change orders and then we can go through and vote on them after we discuss each one. So Dan, the first one up is change order 216 on the agenda. Intercom door, if you just want to give us a 30-second spiel on that, it's been signed by ONG and approved by the architect.
Thank you, Steve. So, yep, change order request number 216 includes an additional master station and door button release that was requested on, on both projects, actually. During the course of Matt's wrap-up on the project, this was requested of him. He went direct to MSS, who is not one of our trade contractors, so we issued a PO directly to that security vendor to take care of the work at the time. This change order approves the increase to ONG's general conditions for the cost of that PO. The funds are withdrawn from the CM contingency, making it a $0 change to the GMP.
Understand. All right, thanks, Dan. And the only thing, now this one's actually a couple of years old. In most of the change orders, we have, there's a statement on the top, eligible and ineligible. This one did not have anything on there. I would expect that this was not in the original plan, correct?
Correct.
All right, I don't, I doubt that this one's going to be, the state's gonna view this as a positive change, as a allowable change order. But this was something specifically that was asked for by the school. We'll see what happens. We'll submit it and see. All right, with that, I move that we accept change order number 216, a $0 change order, adding intercom and door release. Seconded by Mr. Tuminsky. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the change order, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Gary Tuminsky, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappamaher, Bye.
The eyes have it, motion is approved. Moving on. Next is change order number 222. This is electrical allowance closeout. Dan?
Yep, and as it's described there, that is the trade contractor allowance reconciled with all of the trades billing, all the backup that's attached. The document here is to submit to the state for review, the, the costs and money spent out of the allowance for their review as well as to return any unused allowance, which is the $6,010 back to the committee or back to the town's coffer by deduct change order to the GMP.
Okay, and the comment that you have in, in blue on there where there's overhead and profit as far as to trade contract allowances, can you explain that a little bit?
Yep, the, I'll make sure it opens up here for me.
Yeah, that's the one where you've got $2,600 of that money in the allowance shift is not expected to be eligible.
Right, as I look to what is, what is typically or accepted as eligible costs, if they stray too far from the intended use of the allowance, or if they were for rework in any way, I identify them right out of the gate to the CGR that they are not eligible. We do our best to get, you know, the maximum amount of eligibility, so by flagging what we know to be problematic benefits us as the, as the audit actually takes place.
Thank you. All right, with that, I move that we approve change order 222. This is electrical allowance, electrical allowance closeout. It's a negative change order in the amount of $6,010. And that motion is now made.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Tuminsky. Is there any discussion on allowance, or change order 222? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the change order, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Gary Tuminsky, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappamaher, Bye.
With that, the eyes have it, change order 222 is approved. Moving on to item 7.6, change order 220, the kiln for the Gallup Hill School, Dan?
Yep, we had found that this was actually something, again, that Matt bought directly by issuing a purchase order to Rusty Kiln. This was a note on the drawings that was not assigned to a bid package, so thereby not bought when we bought out the project. Similarly, it's, it's, it's just, it's a way of tracking for everyone involved that there's a increase to the ONG general conditions and reversibles for specific item. But the cost was taken from the CM contingency as it's not a change in scope of work, which makes it a net $0 change to the GMP. I'll add one last comment. The reason, Steve, that I don't put eligibility at the top of these couple of CORs is because they're increasing the ONG general condition. And it's at the time of audit that our full general condition fee comes into play. And without anybody going through specifically and asking how that final number came about, you know, the, the state's gonna reflect back on ONG's cost as ONG's cost to you and hopefully be completely eligible.
Understand. And just one quick item in this particular case, you guys went directly to the kiln. I'm sure that Rusty Kil LLC just makes kilns and sells kilns for a living. If you would have gone back and tried to do a change to one of the trade contracts on this, might correct that we would have probably seen a much higher cost?
Yes, you would have seen at minimum the 10% OMP, but also the handling and management of, you know, we might have seen cost direct from the trade for, for shuttling this piece of equipment in and out.
Understand. All right, so with that, we have change order 220. Thank you for the explanation. This is a $0 change order because it was movement from the CM contingency. And with that, I move that we approve change order 220 for the Gallup Hill School.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Tuminsky. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Gary Tuminsky, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappamaher, Bye.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it, that change order is approved. And next we have change order 195, and this, my understanding of this change order, I'll let Dan explain it, is that the, when we added in the extra work involving some of the site work, stone wall with sign, the safe rooms and some other work that we had in the Gallup Hill School, that there was, at that point, because we were past the substantial completion and things, that there would be additional costs that was identified back then in supervision of the work that was ongoing. And this change order covers that. So Dan, if you want to go further into detail, please.
Yep, so this was a discussion that Mike Brennan had brought up. What he, what he had done after the, you know, the project basically wrapping up in 2019, work began somewhat in the summer of 2019, and then included in the backup of the change is a list of specific items that, that Mike managed. He did that between, you know, primarily from about January of 2020 through his departure from ONG in July of 2020. And he provided a list to myself and to Steve J. The mag opened, the mag door hold opens, he managed putting the handicap buttons on both school entrances, course room power, stage lights, stage low level backstage lighting, locker room revision. The safe room, as Steve mentioned, paving the driveway at the barn, adding fencing and gates, doing the vermiculite remedial work at Gallup Hill. All of these items were done at minimum cost for supervision. And so what Mike provided was a standard OMP rate. And then a, and then asked essentially to the committee if it would be an acceptable reallocation of some of the available funds for supervision. If you recall, way back when I was involved and we had wrapped up the, the summer work at Leger Middle School, we brought in a second super and we had set up an allowance when we set up our contract that should we need additional supervision to take care of the scope of work, that we were, you know, we had identified that cost. At the Gallup Hill School, there was no second super required. So we have an allowance that was a set aside of $72,000 that we didn't need. And when Mike did the math to describe the cost of what would be a standard overhead and profit on that work to take care of not only his costs, but the processing of change orders, our main office, general condition staffing cost, those weren't covered in the small fees that we had applied to each individual change. So what it nets to is, is a difference of about 27, 27, 9 in cost that we had asked if the committee would consider increasing our general conditions staffing for, for Mike's time.
All right, thanks for the explanation, Dan. And also for those on the, on the committee, depending on what type of browser you're in or what you're doing, if you click on that 7.7 and you dig down, you'll see the list of items that we added in as a town in, in early 2020, you know, on page 73 of your packet, if you want to look at that a little bit closer. All right, thank you for the explanation, Dan. In this case here, so this is change order 2, excuse me, change order 195 for the Gallup Hill School. Incidentally, for the committee, when we had final estimated closeout costs, these take, these negative change orders were already kind of calculated in that previously because ONG had given us best estimate because I needed to give the town finance director the best possible estimate of final cost. So these are already reflective of the numbers I provided her. We just have not done all the paperwork for it. So in this case, this is a negative change order of $44,865 as we, as Dan just explained what's involved and what's, what's not involved in that particular, that part of the project. So with that, I move that we accept change order number 195 for the Gallup Hill School in the amount of $44, negative $44,865.
This is Kate. I can second that.
Seconded by Kate Tappamaher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving change order, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Gary Tuminsky, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappamaher, Bye.
With that, the eyes have it and that motion is approved. All right, moving on next to item 7.8 on the agenda, this is for the, this is change order number 208, and there's a whole bunch of things on here and allowances that close out several things. So Dan, why don't you go ahead and take that?
This actually represents the remaining GMP allowances, again, costs that we identified at the time of the guaranteed max amendment in which we did not need those funds. There is a list, if it opens up quick enough for me here, that, you know, we had a cost to, to power wash what was in the existing building. Basically, a $10,000 set aside for improvements on the existing brick that we may have paid a few dollars on change orders to the trade, but instead, and that we still had a full and intact allowance. We were concerned about AVB compatibility, and that's another allowance that we had set aside because we had two different contractors doing the work. If, if we did need to have compatible products, it would potentially be some additional cost to a trade that we were able to avoid the lion's share of. Another allowance of $25,000 for temporary roof protection that we didn't utilize, returns back to the town. And then an allowance for some safety items, some scaffold that we had considered putting around during construction at the Gallup Hill site. Again, returning back to the town, 9,832 out of the GMP. Combining that, you get a 55K deduct and then also a reduction in the ONG fee for a reduction in the GMP. That's what you get the net of a return back to the GMP or reduction to GMP of 56,832.
Thank you, Dan. So this is change order number 208, a series of change, of GMP allowances being closed out for a net negative 56,832. So with that, I move we accept change order 208.
I'll second that one.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Tuminsky. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving change order, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Gary Tuminsky, I.
Gary Schneider, I.
Kate Tappamaher, Bye.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it, change order 208 is approved. All right, just moving, moving it now on to chain, item number 7.10, which is, these are both Silver Petrocelli associate items. Steve June, I know you're online. Dean had indicated he was gonna get back. I realize it wasn't long ago. We had that meeting, it was only a week ago. Do you have anything more on that to share with us, or are you still waiting on your business office? Maybe lose Steve June?
Yeah, I'm here.
You're muted.
I couldn't hear you. What was that, Steve? Yeah, the, the two items that are on the agenda for Silver Petrocelli invoices, Dean was gonna check. We had thought that those were in fact paid. Do you have anything further to add on that, or is that, it was only a week ago, so?
Yeah, I've, I've not heard anything from Dean yet. I can follow up.
All right, not a problem. All right, so with that, we've kind of closed through all the items that we had to vote on, Katie, Kate, so we can, whenever you have to depart, understand that. We're gonna move now back up on the, back up to item 7.1, which is our discussion update, possible action on the Leger School Improvement Project. So one of the things, I've got a, we have some additional folks that are attending the meeting tonight that have not attended the meetings in the past, specifically from, from ONG. I know Chris Rizzi is online and he has been the onsite super for the project on and off. And we also have Mr. Mark Jeffco joining us from ONG, and I believe, Mark, you're, you're either Dan's boss or Dan's boss's boss.
Yeah, Dan, Dan and both Dan and Chris report to me. So I'm basically filling in the role for, for Mike Brennan, who's retired from the company. And I've been keeping track of the project kind of in peripherals, but over recent communications that I've bred, I thought I'd need to get a little bit more involved. So going forward, you know, I will be involved with this, with the project and making sure that we, we get close out here in an expedition fashion, so.
All right, thank you. All right, so first of all, the first question I just want to ask, and this goes to Dan. Dan, today is the 3rd of May 2021, and I believe that we were, our goal was to have all the items on the punch list complete by the end of April. So we're into May now. As a general rule, I don't think we're there. Is that correct?
That's right. We made some strides, but there are items open on this list.
All right, so I think what we want to do here is, we'll go ahead and we'll start with the middle school because the laundry list is shorter there. What I'd like to do is to do it in this fashion here, Wayne, to give just an overview of how things have been going, what he's been seeing. Get any comments from ONG to follow up that and then go through the punch list. And I think the best way to do this, and, and Dan, I hope that you're able to do this on your end, is if you, rather than us send a bunch of spreadsheets out to people and have all people on different lines, I think the best way for this is, and Lisa, Dan should be able to share his screen, is that correct? To share your screen of that punch list and just kind of go through that step by step. So, so that, we'll do that on each of the schools. And I'd left out Steve June, so, so it'll be Wayne, Dan will speak, Steve June will speak, and of course, Chris or Mark, you can jump in as you may need to. And then we'll go to the punch list itself. So first up will be Dan, and one of the things I do want you to talk about, Dan, is how the HVAC system has been performing, but let's stick with one school before we go to the other. So we're on the Leger Middle School first, and the floor is yours, Wayne, sorry.
Okay, thank you. I did receive an updated punch list today from, this morning, from Dan on both schools. I did get through the middle school. I was able to get over there for most of the afternoon, go through the list. To start with, before we get into that, as, Steve, you're aware, I had emailed, you want to just bring the committee up to speed. There are electrical monitoring systems in this building, and apparently they have not been set up or installed. The units exist, the ones in the attic are calling out that they've never been programmed and need to be set up. The ones in the electrical room, 102 downstairs, one of them has no circuit breakers attached to it. It's labeled on the panel that the certain ones, but they're just blanked out. The other one has three single pole breakers installed with a note in tape alongside it said, need to install a triple pole breaker. So those are rough and not operating. That was just discovered this past, last week at some point.
All right, just wait, wait, are those items on the electrical, are they on the punch list that you reported today?
No, because they, they, they weren't aware of it until last week when I sent that email out.
Okay, we'll, we'll let Dan and others cover that. Okay, we'll we'll let Dan and others cover that when when they have their chance. Go ahead and keep going on Legerd Middle School, Wayne.
Um, basically, there hasn't been much progress that I've seen. I am waiting for some information back from the custodians because I believe they went out and installed all the door hold opens and new arms. There's at least one, I was told, isn't working. So I I'm just waiting for confirmation on that. Other than that, we're also waiting for the now that it's gotten warmer for the grounds person to come back and do the replacement of the plantings and stuff. And finish up the exterior work that needed to be done. Okay. Did you want to move into the punch list or? You're you're muted, Steve.
All right. So on the middle school, what I'd like to do, I want to stay on the middle school for right now. So Dan, before we go line by line, just some general comments on the middle school or anything. And I realize it may seem redundant if we're going to go through the punch list, but specifically, Dan, if you want to address the electrical. The the power meters that that Wayne brought up and and I presume that those will be added onto this list following the meeting if they're not already. So we'll go ahead and let ONG speak on this. And whichever of you need to, I presume Dan, you'll run the show. And then we'll get Steve June to speak and then we'll go into the punch list.
Okay, so to the to the couple of new things or comments that that Wayne made. The metering, the submetering devices that are that are physically installed. Those are called Eman Demon meters. They're a part of your contract documents that they submeter different systems of the building. They there was a contentious change order for that scope of work because although they were shown, they were not shown to be powered. And so here's just a quick explanation of how it slipped through the cracks is that the final negotiation with Ferguson Electric in order to get that change order approved, which ultimately did get approved, they did get. You know, it was part of their closeout. It was back in, I don't know, September, maybe August of last year that I got to the final number and was able to process that change. At that time, the project manager, Nick. In, you know, promised me that he was going to get back to finish the work and evidently it did not. So what's what's missing here is powering these units up. They've been they've been wired. But what was not known at the time of the bid set was that they do take a separate power source that you don't just put the meter like a circuit tap over the source of power going to the subpanel that it's monitoring. And so those breakers do need to be purchased. Since being informed that the work wasn't done, Ferguson did send a man out there to get a parts list. And and may be able to flip the breaker on the ones that are ready to go on Wednesday. And then we'll have the remainder of the parts. And then we'll schedule with Wayne to get in and and power those up. The ability of your building to submeter is is an excellent thing, and it's actually required as part of the Connecticut High Performance Building. So that that work, although remote, it will be available if if Wayne wants to go see how, say, the chiller demand has increased over, you know, from the month of July to the month of August.
All right. So just a question, just a question on that then. So now go back to Steve June on this one. So you said it was a change order. If it was part of the Connecticut High Performance Building standards, I would assume that those meters would have been in the original plan? Or how did we wind up having a change order for it? As opposed to that just being in the original design? How did we get there?
Boy, that's going to send that's going to send Steve on the way back because only myself probably stays a little more intimate with with all of these little issues. And again, I tried to describe it not to to cut you off, Steve, but the metering devices themselves were on the one line drawings of the electrical set. It wasn't until they were submitted that Ferguson issued an RFI saying, hey, these things require a separate power source. And we agreed that the change that the separate power source and running a circuitry over to these meters was an additional cost. It was the magnitude of the cost that we got into, you know, discussions and long term negotiation with with Ferguson Electric.
All right. So just to make sure you understand, so the meters were actually in the plan. Ferguson had bought them. They were that plan had been done. It is the power to the or the extra power to power the meter itself as opposed to pass through power that required the change order.
Ten four.
All right. But the ones that but they were installed and the power's been running through these meters with us just not getting any data from it until now, correct?
No, yeah, they're not. They don't work quite that way. They do utilize some sort of a circuit tap that the power to the actual panel does not feed through the meter.
I know it's up to now. We haven't had any data from them because they haven't been powered.
Correct.
Actual meters.
Or flip or in some cases, just flipping the breaker.
Okay, not to delve into the Gallup Hill School. Do we have the same issue in the Gallup Hill School?
That I don't. That's now crossed my radar. I don't know if Ferguson got their change order approved earlier. I mean, this came up during construction. So I did talk to Ferguson and they are going to go out and see if there's meters are all powered up at the Gallup School. Well, maybe maybe Wayne knows.
I don't.
Yeah. So my question on that would be number one, obviously, we paid for these meters. We want to make sure that we have the town has that data to use it however they have to. In fact, a change in the power consumption for a piece of equipment may be an indicator that that piece of equipment is going to fail soon or something. So there's 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 ancillary use for that data. Besides, you know, what the power hogs are inside the school. But obviously, we want to take a look at that because you know, we've seen in a lot of cases where things were done differently with two schools. We had one architectural firm, but there were still two different architectural teams designing the building. So we have seen some differences there. But obviously, that makes us question it because Ferguson was the electrical contractor on both buildings, correct, Dan?
Correct.
So we would expect to take a look at that. So we'll hopefully have an answer on that. And so in this case, we had to do a change order because the original design did not have the breakers. And those meters being powered. Is that correct, Dan?
That's correct.
Okay, understand that better now. All right. Anything else, Steve June, you want to add on before we start going through the punch list for the middle school?
No, just that I'm spending about a half an hour a week on my time. And then we've got the engineer, the mechanical engineers pretty much also involved, but they're probably about a half an hour also. So ESPNA's time is very limited.
Yep, I see that when I see your bills. They're they're very, very cost conscious. Appreciate that. All right. So with that, Dan, I think the first thing we see is item nine up there, and I believe that's the top item, the door mark one five four, correct? If you can zoom out a little bit out more so we can see the right hand column, that'd be great. One more click. Okay, the other way. Sorry. I want to see the right the right hand column, the dollar value.
Oh, yep.
All right.
How's that?
Yeah, just scooted a little bit more to the left and we're good. Yeah, perfect. Right there. All right. So with that, what I'd like to do on this is Dan, if you'll bring up, first of all, the color scheming we see here, my understanding is if something is is shaded green. That means that ONG believes that the work is complete and you're just waiting for the school to say that it is it's good, correct?
That's correct. We reduced the overall size of the punch list to the items that are that remain on this sheet. And since the last time I updated it, which was the two ten walkthrough that we did with Steve and Wayne. We've completed the items in green.
All right. So what I'd like to do now is to go through it. And I would like to hear is, you know, what the condition is. What's the prognosis for getting this thing fixed? And Wayne, I'd like you to chime in if at at each item, if you think that if you disagree or I think it was a different story, same thing for Steve June. We're going to do a review with this with the with the town next week and hopefully we'll have some more things cleared by then. And if there's disagreement on whether something has been cleared. You know, mainly what I need to also know here is the estimated date that this is going to be complete so we can move on. So Dan, you've got the floor.
Okay, and I'll I'll rely on Chris as well as he's got. He's been tasked with getting back with some of these trades, try to get some answers. From the list of hardware issues that we had taking on this punch list, there were two doors that didn't have functioning cylinders. The cylinders were replaced this, but as I understood, the replacements didn't function because they were missing a pin. That was the last I heard, and it goes back a ways. So I apologize, Wayne, if if this may already be completed or if this didn't get completed since since we've last spoke. I believe number nine is complete. That was the one in the going into the kitchen in the cafeteria.
Right, right. And then there was and then the replacement over in the gym storage room, there was one lock that did not have a cylinder. They purchased and delivered a cylinder. You're not. You don't think that one was done?
We don't have the knob, the the tailpiece for the core.
The tailpiece is still missing.
Okay, okay. Then you also have room one thirty or one sixty six in the main hall where they came and took the core out of. And that is missing an internal piece to the lock. We have a core. Because they gave us a couple of different extra cores, but we don't have the internal piece that goes behind the core, not the tab. There's another piece in there. It's missing.
So Chris, do you know what he's talking about? I'm not not familiar enough with hardware.
I I do. And I actually spoke to Morgan this morning, and she thought she had delivered both of those Wayne to you. But hearing from you now, I'll reach back out to her in the morning and it's easy enough. I can just swing by and pick them up.
She took them to the school or something. I'll double check, but I I have not seen them.
Okay, I'll double check with her and then we'll, you know, we'll pick them up and drop them off.
And Wayne, for any of these items that you're not positive have been like at all possible for next week's meeting with the town leadership that we have answers on these by then, please.
Yep.
All right, Dan.
So item number twenty two is a is a condition that you have in the cafeteria as you look out that that ribbon window wall towards the parking lot. Our documents didn't call out for a closure or a cover piece of aluminum that would go to conceal the sealant joint at the floor. But back when I walked with with Wayne and took over the punch list from Mike. Wayne had identified this as an area where he'd like to see that piece of aluminum that was added in other places in the renovated areas. Just so that we weren't looking at a sealant joint. Lockheed, I kept it on the list because I was hoping that Lockheed would be available and do some additional workforce. Since then, they're not interested. And so I I I offer that this is not a punch list item and that and that it's built and constructed per documents.
Yeah, but this is more of a quality control. The flooring did not butt up against the storefront frame at most spots.
Right. So you mean like horizontally? Because I didn't notice that, Steve.
Right. So either the flooring company has to come back and repair that section. And I had this discussion with Matt when he was here, and he said, no, we'll just get the trim piece and put it in.
Okay, I wasn't aware that the that the four bow floor was short of the storefront frame, which is what I'm understanding from from you.
Correct. And there's a large sealant joint in there. It's not just a, you know, an eighth inch seam or something.
Which would, you know, again, it's if the flooring doesn't meet the plane of the storefront frame, then then the issue's open, in my opinion. So we'll have to take another look at that. And have to make some phone calls to see what we can do to get a piece of brake shape painted in that same white color.
So in this case here, it's the flooring guy's problem, but the way to fix it is Lockheed may fix it easily because you don't want to replace the floor. So you know, that's sounds to me like something that, you know, we can we can resolve and just get a piece of metal in there to cover that and it'll look good. And in fact, it would stainless work there? Wayne?
Yeah, that would be fine, too. I don't know how it's going to match with the aluminum on the
Oh, that's a white storefront. That's a white storefront, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Similar materials.
Yeah, it might be easier for us to just we'll reach out to Lockheed tomorrow morning. And if I have to go pick up, I'll take the measurement and then I'll fasten it so we don't have to bring Lockheed into it. Hopefully, they have a piece in their in their yard.
Roger. Thank you. All right. Keep going, Dan.
Let's see. Next item was a was a hard hat that was applied to the underside of a truss.
It's gone.
Finally.
Yeah, finally. Yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
And yeah, thank you, Wayne, for letting me use the lift.
Anytime. That's not a problem. Whatever it takes to get it done.
Like next item is twenty eight. We had been investigating a door leak that goes exits out of the media center on that same south elevation. That was resolved.
Then that that shouldn't be that shouldn't be green. I found the issue and we're going to correct it, but it hasn't been corrected yet. It'll be corrected Wednesday.
Fixed on Wednesday. Next item are the three issues that we have for our miscellaneous metals contractor who again, has failed us in in getting out there to get the work done. I know the the last meeting that I attended, I reported that I thought the work was pending and would be done over break. But we've had very little response. I don't have a date in a time. I should just say I don't have a date yet for this this work. I can't add much more than we're suffering with a guy that's got a change order in his hands for the scope of work and hasn't performed it.
Dan, considering where we are with the I realize you you have you're holding back money from QSR on this. What's the procedure for if you were to source this to someone, you know, reasonable, I think we've been reasonable in getting them to do this work. What is the procedure for ONG to have someone else do this work and or self perform whatever it has to happen? And does that require us to open things back up paperwork wise with the final bill? Or can that be done internal to ONG? What's the status here? But we are looking at a few thousand dollars worth of work here, maybe four grand.
The preferences to is to manage the work outside of any change in contract with the town of of Legerd. We have mechanisms in place, whereas either the trade would would pay somebody else to do the work directly so that we don't have to issue a change to the trade. That would be the preference as far as mechanisms go. If things came really to push to shove and and first QSR doesn't do the work. Second, we find a contractor to do the work and QSR won't pay them to do the work. Then we would have to resort to a deduct change or get them to sign a waiver when we don't give them their final payment. Again, there's multiple mechanisms in place where we don't have to modify the contract agreement that's already been now set in stone. And closed out financially since, you know, since November, December.
Hey, thanks, Dan.
And Steve, yeah, Steve, I'll speak to I'll speak to the owner of QSR tomorrow. I will get ahold of him and and make a decision tomorrow whether he could do the work or we find someone else to get it completed. So.
Yeah, in this particular, these items thirty six through thirty eight are are safety issues. And, you know, I can understand, you know, Wayne, your concern on this, and we need to get this resolved.
Right.
Thank you. Fifty one.
Fifty one, we've had Noble Construction out there for back over the couple of weeks about a month ago doing repairs to the panels. And so these blue panels completed and repaired.
I was out today and all the chips and stuff are still there. They haven't been painted over.
So we'll need to set a time. We have expectations that we'll be getting together this week to
Yeah.
to go over some of these items directly because the trade is very anxious to do the work that he needs to do as we're holding a significant amount of money on them. And he's, you know, reported back to us as well as we thought he we hit the spots, but.
We actually have pictures of the work that he performed as well. So if you're looking at other areas, Wayne, we can talk, we can meet out there and you can point those out. But, you know, I know the ones on the backside of the gym, the dimples are all, I mean, the backside of the cafeteria. And the white panels, those dimples have all been fixed and repaired. The blue ones, as they could reach. Have been done, but we'll get Noble out there and you can point some more out to them.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, yeah, the whites still have a bunch of dimples in them by the cafeteria. And the blue ones still have, you know, where they cut edges and stuff that they didn't put the resealer, put the paint into.
And Wayne, if you can't be there when 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 Chris is there, take a picture of the side of the building and then annotate it.
Yeah, that's fine.
So there's no question as to what we're talking about here. So we can keep moving. All right. I think we're on sixty two bind chain blind chains.
Yes, we we understand, but haven't physically seen. I don't know if Chris, you have any more information on? This was a general note and as we understood when we This was a general note and as we understood when we wrapped up the building. Um, you know, we weren't able to secure these blind chains to the storefront window frames. We didn't want to puncture or drill holes. Uh so they used a uh, you know, strong adhesive to attach them, evidently not holding up. Um not sure how extensive the problem is and not sure if, if a repeated attempt at adhesives is gonna solve this problem. It may be something that. This doesn't pose a hazard, um or maybe something that poses a hazard to the extent that. We wanna put a screw into the, into the storefront. There's no real good solution for, for what this condition is.
Is this all the windows with blinds or just uh one or two, what, what we got here?
At the time, it was uh probably forty percent of them. Um I know they've come back and worked on some, so I don't know exactly how many are still remaining. Um it presents much less of a problem at the middle school than it does with younger kids at the elementary school.
Right?
So again, we, we could take the, you know, we could take another approach to, to, or we should. Determine whether or not we're going to re-affix them with a, with a structural sealant. Um and then hope for the best that it lasts two years, four years, or how long it, you know, it takes them to, to break loose and that it becomes a maintenance item. Or if it, the committee or Steve uh June decides that it's worth to penetrate the storefront system. You know, it's something that we avoided at the time of original installation. Um and it would be something that I would not recommend be done. As uh, you know, you don't really want to take any of the integrity away from your window.
Correct, it might void the warranty.
So if it, it's the answer here is to uh, to go through the building again with a sealant, then that's the direction we would go.
I will ask the custodians to give me an inventory on what rooms are, still have a problem and then, you know, we can go from there.
Hey.
Okay, so we, next item is in this, is in the regard to the ceiling tiles. Uh we know we've gone through and we know we've spoken to this issue several times. Um we're not of the opinion that, that replacement of the tiles and on an occasion is, is more than. Uh what would be normally expected. Um but on the same token, we understand that to set, you know, a dozen tiles over again. Uh and possibly use a little sealant to hold them in place. You should know that the manufacturer has actually provided a, a technical bulletin. That describes the condition of the perimeter tiles in this type of tile system. Um and that technical bulletin requires that uh, that you hold the tile away from the wall angle. Essentially leaving some looseness in the corners and perimeter tile. Um in the case where they are snug or tight to the perimeter wall angle. What it does is it imposes a, an inability to remove the field tiles. Um not saying that, you know, we wouldn't go ahead and, and put some glue dogs in some of these pieces that continually. Uh are problematic, we just want to bring to light that, you know, the, the, the installation is, is pretty typical.
Dan, can you send me the technical bulletin?
Uh I have not.
No, can you?
Uh certainly can.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I can get it, then I can measure the tiles and see if they're cut to spec.
But even if, hold on for a minute, even if they are cut to spec, they should, you know, we can't blame gravity for the problem here because. If they're, if they're falling, um then they're, the, the collective installation, the manufacturer. Uh and gravity, those three things combined here are, are causing an, an unsafe to some degree. Granted, it's a ceiling tile, but a uh, an unacceptable situation, so either, uh you know. And I hate to say to me to put a little gob of glue or some uh, you know, something up there to make it stick. Or even double back tape, I have no idea, but the, the answer is um, it shouldn't fall, even if the, the bulletin says that that's the correct size. It still shouldn't fall. Um so, you know, that's the point we're at, I don't want to go any further on it really, but um. Uh Dan, if we had to measure a couple, we'll figure that out. Um and if the problem is that they're too tight and you can't get the other ones out. Uh I still, you know, there's gotta be a happy medium in there between the two. Um where it's not too tight but not too loose. And again, this is probably the least technical thing except in the entire building, um and it's. Been a pain through the entire time, so um unless somebody has it in the comments, that's fine. Uh at this point, is uh the drywall techniques contractor, are they, do they feel they have any ownership left here?
In his email, I mean, like Chris, you can correct me, but he did offer if he needed to come out one more time, he would, would do that. I mean, he's been a. He's been a participant in, in a few different issues that we've had out there, so. Um I think that if that's the direction you want to go, we want to set them one more time. You have kind of a unique situation with the slopes and the roofs that we have. You are, you know, your ceilings are large area. And suspended off a system that is, you know, a roof trust that's, you know, fifteen, twenty feet higher. Than, than where the, the grid system is, so you're gonna have some movement to the, to the grid. Not that we want to again, spend too much time thinking about what it would take to fix some ceiling top.
All right, thanks Dan.
Either way, the, the tile shouldn't be cut short enough that they can shift over enough to fall out. And then they're not falling to the ground. They're getting to the point where they hang up on the two corners and just tilt down at, at forty-five degree angle.
That's exactly what the uh, that's exactly what is referenced in the bulletin.
You know, and he's come, they've come back and put them in two or three times, you know, and within a few days, uh they're back again, hanging out.
And if, correct me if I'm wrong, the last count we had was, you know, fifteen to twenty tiles that are, that are problematic and repeat occurring.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, to that extent, we're not, we shouldn't be spending any more of our time on it.
Wayne, just a quick question of the, of the fifteen to twenty tiles, how many of them are in the classrooms?
Uh, I haven't looked at all the classrooms, but I know of two.
All right, and is it where the teachers are still hanging stuff from the ceiling grid?
One of them, yes, the other one, no.
All right.
My understanding is they shouldn't hang anything from the ceiling grid for two reasons, one, it can interfere with the fire suppression. Um and uh number two, it can screw with the ceiling itself, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
I have no dispute with that.
Right, all right, Wayne, I'll, oh, for a minute there, I got an email, I thought I got an email from Chris Rizzi, I just realized that he's sending an email. All right, um, okay, uh with that, uh we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh or on the punch list rather, which is uh painted hearing, I thought we had come to agree with the painting contractor. They were going to warranty that extensive and we should be good, right?
Yeah, this, waiting for the uh written documents.
Right, I have two actions here, the first is uh, well, first is to make a general, is to make note that. The item related to the wall paint in the corridors was removed as a, as a, as a punch list item based on the agreement that we had. Um this particular item is for access panels, not the general adhesion uh of the corridor. Again, the same parameters applied, but I didn't want to take anything off the punch list that, that we didn't specifically address. So what we have here is, is the painter is gonna come out, he's gonna touch up the access panels, he was gonna wait until the summer. Um but, but I'm not thinking more waiting any longer.
No, he's actually scheduled for uh Wednesday morning, I think Wayne, I sent you an email on it, just to give you a heads up.
That's fine, whichever, I'm fine, we're close enough to the end of the year, so either is fine with me.
Well, we want to get it just done, so they're gonna be out Wednesday morning. Um I'm meeting him there, we're gonna go and take care of these items and then I think there's one more item that you added to, or Steve June added. For the sprinkler room, so they're gonna take care of that.
Yep. And I don't, also don't see the pipe in the uh loading dock on here either.
That's um, that's what I think uh Chris is referring to, the pipe in the loading dock.
No, there's the pipe in the loading dock and then there's also the um sprinkler room.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was, Steve June had made a, had sent us a note about the, about that work. So yeah, we have a few, we have the, essentially there's now. Two items that are not on this list because they were discovered after the punch list. Um and then this item on the punch list related to painting and eighty-seven related to painting.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll be taken care of on Wednesday.
Chris, you're gonna make sure that he's putting some kind of rusted in it or primer or something on that pipe before he just top coats it with the white, right?
Oh yeah, 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 he's not, yeah, no, he's gonna do it right, so we're not doing it again.
Okay, uh Dan, before you move on to uh, and I, so we talked about one sixteen here at the same time, before you go on to sixty-nine real quick. Um for, for Steve June, uh at this point here, this, the clearing of these punch list items. Um my understanding is that the, the plantings outside of LMS are warranty replacement of plants. So they're not gonna be on the punch list because they're, they're being fixed under warranty. But does Silver Petroselli need to come out and, and validate any of this stuff? Um I realize you're on time materials with us, but. Um do you guys need to come back out and validate this, or can this just be done remotely as you've been? No, we'll, we'll come out and validate it. Okay. We're just waiting for the interior work to get done and then we're gonna jump onto the exterior. All right, uh between Dan and me, let him know when that time should be to come out then to validate these. All right, uh you're on number sixty-nine.
I am, but I'm, I'm taken aback, we walked through and did the punch list last year, uh more than a year ago. The only item that um, that remains on any type of punch list related to site work is a uh. Is an agreement that Wayne had pointed out in the fall, where five plants uh did not make it through the summer season last year. And those five plants are low shrubs that were to be replaced in the spring.
Right, those are just warranted by the uh landscape contractor.
Yeah, there were five low shrubs and the tree they planted last year died before the season was out.
Okay, I'm not a, I'd have to get a location on that tree with you, Wayne.
It was just outside the cafeteria. You're going into the left.
By the, into the left set of doors that go by the media center?
Yeah, by the media center, there's a tree just a little left there that they replaced last year. That died before the year was out.
Okay.
Before the summer was over. And then you also have the curb issue.
We have a curb issue at LMS?
Yeah.
At the front entrance. There's some chips in the curb and there's a piece of stick, stick that's in the concrete, there's a piece of wood stick. That was somehow poured with the concrete.
Okay, so those were not on a punch list, but identified by Steve June. At least the, the, the chip in the curb and the, and the now exposed wooden stake. So we'll have to add that to our uh warranty list with the trade.
Is the uh, is that piece of wood in there in the vicinity where that chip is, so that it caused uh a, that's what called the failure?
Yeah, caused the stall.
All right, so that's gonna be repair of that by the concrete uh contractor?
Um it'll be repaired, at this point, whether we have to do it, whether we send a mason out from ONG to do it, we're gonna take care of it.
Eh, either way, great, all right, uh continue, sir.
Okay, um let's see, so we're back to a general note regarding panels, screws missing or loose. Um you know, as we look through the literal thousands of screws on the side of the building, we're not sure. Quite where they were, but I know that Noble spent some time out uh on the site to re, to find and, and install anywhere that they could.
Yeah, I did not see any missing or loose screws when I was out there today. Um there's still dimples in the white um panels on the cafeteria side. Um and to some degree uh over the gym doors, a couple of spots, but uh. The, most of the ones that I, that were originally called out down at the low side. Um were taken care of, but there are additional ones up toward the top edge of the cafeteria wall.
Okay, so as we've mentioned, we'll, we'll schedule Noble back.
That's fine.
Get on it. Uh our next item is eighty-one, where um there's a small scratch to a uh, one of the door lights on the main entrance.
That's getting repaired on uh Wednesday when I'm there.
Okay, thank you.
Uh next item is eighty-nine, um again, we've been monitoring these uh, these two potential leaks. Not sure where or how often they occur.
Dan, I have Greenwood and Action Air meeting on the site at nine o'clock with Wayne. And uh we're gonna go over these roof leaks or these areas and uh hopefully. Um be able to address them.
That, that is uh tomorrow?
Uh no, not tomorrow, tomorrow, Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yes.
All right, I thought I had on my calendar, but I'll double check.
Okay, so hopefully we can put that to bed, it's been a difficult one to find. The next item was a sprinkler head that uh turned out to be impeded by uh an AV installation of a speaker.
That's complete.
Been done.
Yep.
Um the next item is in the vestibule, we have a custom cut tile uh or carpet. Uh walk off Matt, that.
That will be onsite on Wednesday as well, to make that repair.
Great, it's uh, it's kinda tucked in the corner and hard to see, but uh you know, we saw it. Next item is more panel related items, two more panel related items. And then we spoke to the painter coming out, uh we had done some masonry patching over at the roll-up door. Uh where the exterior storage is and, and it needs to be painted.
Right, it looks good, it just needs paint.
Okay, so we, I did, we still have identified um, you know, a few dozen items here, Max. Um and I think we were adding one or two to this list based on the discussions here. Um hopefully, half of these will be closed out by next week, um and we talked about uh deadlines on these and some of the problems. Uh you know, and middle school is uh, you know, you know, in much better shape than Gallup Hill School, so with that. Um is there any other comments on this?
Before we leave, I got a couple of questions for Chris. Uh Chris, how did you making out with the mirrors in the restrooms?
Uh Noble's looking into, that's a warranty item.
Okay.
So he's going to his vendor to um, for them, and uh it's on my list, so.
Well, what about the uh, the closer on the restroom door in the kitchen? That was part of the contract, was never installed.
That I wasn't aware of. Um I'll find out, the, so the restroom door in the kitchen.
Right, was supposed to have a closer on it, this health department cited that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm on the phone, I'm on my thing.
Pardon? Okay, uh Dan, where do we stand on getting the roof, the door on the uh. HVAC unit on the roof replaced that the roofer damaged?
The uh. The door now being identified as to which air handling unit it is, is on the list of things for the guys to uh confirm which door. When they're on site, Action Air, so that they can get that information off to uh, to York to provide the replacement door.
Okay, and I thought we were gonna put a cage around the, here is the wooden cage around the ladder, roof ladder in the stairwell?
Yeah, that's actually item. Oh, it's not on this list, but it's on the, it's in the change order work for. For QSR, we issued the change order uh through this committee. And it's on, it's included in the scope of work that QSR has.
I thought that was the uh fall protection in number thirty-seven, or is that something different?
Um no, this is, these are all in the uh renovated area, in the fan rooms in the renovated area, the work that.
In the stairwell, correct?
Yes, in the new addition.
All right, so that'd be an added item back on here.
Uh right, well, again, it wasn't identified as a punch list item because it was change order work at the time that uh, that this was generated, so. It falls into the category of, of what we're describing here, which are uh, you know, kind of warranty items, although that one's.
Yeah, this one, I think.
Falls into both.
Hey, Dan, this one should be on the, here's the way I look at this one, is since we closed out the project with ONG as far as final bill. Everything that was not done is technically a punch list item, would you agree?
Yes, it did, just what, at what point in time, because the committee made the decision to add that ladder protection in its permanent condition. I think it was probably, it was before October, or it might have been after, so that's where it gets a little gray on us, Steve.
Yeah, so any, any remaining work that has not been performed, since we have done final invoice, uh my, I would argue that those are punch list items. Because they're not warranty items, so they have to go somewhere.
And that's the point, is we want to make sure we track them and, and certainly I'm, I'm very aware of the, the item that we're speaking to. You know, the, the ladder protecting.
Roger, all right, uh go ahead, Wayne?
Yeah, um now Dan, when I was going through here also, I went back to the original. And there's stuff that was on the punch list that I'm not seeing on here any longer. Um like all the rusting hardware on the hinges and the screws. Um in the gym and some other doors.
So if there, you know, the, this list was, you know. So if there, you know, the, this list was, you know, whatever, uh, maybe a hundred and fifty items. Um, and what you see here is not on this list is because we walked them on two-ten, and understood them to be complete. If there's something specific that you find that you want to, uh, you revisit or have us look at and, and, and say it's not finished, then that, you know, we have to have a way.
You were long on that one, weren't you? He's still with us?
Steve June?
Yeah. Yeah, weren't you along on that walk?
Yes, 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 yes.
And didn't we review those?
Correct.
Hinges and screws that are still all rusting?
Correct, and the, and the hinges, yes.
Now they stained the doors.
Yep, and the gym entrance doors, yes.
The specific location that was on the punch list was, the screws were replaced. And that's why it was removed from this list. If there's another like location, then we have to add it to a concern.
Well, there were multiple. What I'll do is I'll send you off the ones I still have concerns about, and you can, you know, we can talk about them. They, that, that were on the original list. Okay.
Any other questions about the punch list that is on the screen right now? Comments from anyone that's on the, uh, on the Zoom? All right, so I, what I see right now is, I did some rough math here, maybe I'm off, is we got probably less than ten thousand dollars, uh, well, less than ten thousand dollars items here. Uh, so these, I think we're going to be down in the five thousand dollar, I mean, the biggest thing we're going to have are those QSR items. Uh, other than that, we're going to be in pretty good shape here at the end of the week. I think, I think the, the cost of the labor on this call for those that aren't, um, well, my labor is free and so is the committees, but everybody else that's under the cost of this call and labor alone is probably going to be more than what's remaining, so let's get this stuff closed out and move on. All right, so with that, if there's nothing else on the middle school, I'd like to move on to Gallup Hill School. Okay. All right, this one, you have to zoom in a little bit more, Dan. I don't really care what trade of a dollar value except the value column, so if you can zoom into, uh, there you go, that's, whoop, that's good, right about there, and just kind of roll up to the top there and, uh, we'll kind of go through these. There's a lot of stuff that's repeat here, so I'm not going to get into the details as much. All this green that's complete, um, is this in fact stuff that we are, um, standing by now just for concurrence from, uh, Ledger Public Schools on?
Yes, and in the difference between this list and what was published for, uh, Ledger Middle School, this is the list in its entirety that was handed to me in July, um, items that Mike had not yet resolved. Um, and so we've walked through the school on two separate occasions, but we haven't received formal response back that we can take an item off the list. So what you see in the left column under item numbers are sequential numbers. And so, um, yes, we've, we've been working this list, you know, since July. Ninety percent of the items were, were taken care of until about, you know, and then the, the last ten percent are here that we're, we're working through. So to answer your question specifically, Steve June and Wayne have seen the majority of these items. Uh, the majority were acknowledged complete, but I didn't receive a confirmation back. So the painful part would be that they're going to look at them again, um, or take the time to, to have to remember what, what an item was. But for, again, complete transparency, nothing has been dropped off this list.
All right, well, you know, um, for example, number five, okay, um, yes, the screws were installed, but they were too long, so now they're sticking out of the, um, instead of meeting flush with the flush panel, um, they're sticking out a good eighth, maybe to a quarter inch. Um, so they didn't install the correct screws.
So what I would ask is that in room number three, room number four, in any other particular room, so that we can identify it back to the trade as an unfinished item? That's the purpose of the back check.
I will go through this in the next day or two and get it back to you before the weekend.
All right, so the assumption here is, so every item that is green on the next, on these four pages that is marked off as complete, uh, I'm hoping to get a, uh, up check from, now, Steve June, if you've looked at these already and have previously told them that they're complete, um, I'm trying to read the notes at the top as to which is which. If they've been reviewed by, uh, SPA, that would be good for us to know. But Wayne, we just need to concur that these are good so we can get them cleaned off the list.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd like for the list, uh, that we do have for the meeting, uh, with the town on Monday, excuse me, on Tuesday, that these items that are here, uh, if they're clear, they're completely off this list, so we don't have to look at all the screen.
That'd be appreciated, and that, you know, that moves this process forward. Um, we did have a walkthrough back in October, and then we had a walkthrough in February, um, and again, just the list was updated and issued out, but, uh, but without a concurrence, I didn't drop anything off the list. Uh, there would be a lot of items to just, to make you aware of, so if, you know, in the interest of not spending, you know, two hours going through these, the, the, the difference between the shading is green, in our opinion, is complete and back checked. The items that are in light green is an issue that, that does need to be resolved because we are not finding a way to provide a satisfactory finish. That's, that, that explains, we have four or five locations in which the, the excursion cup that goes on the back where your pipe goes into the wall underneath the sink. Uh, you know, it, it's not flush to the back wall because of the way the piping configuration, it, it's, it's still about a half inch short of the back wall. Not many people would pick up and not many people would have an issue with it, but it is on this list, so I leave it as a, as an item for us to look at in the field and, and come up with a solution or accept it as is.
Understand, so I'm hoping here that, uh, we, uh, uh, you know, by midweek that you'll have consensus as to whether these are open or closed. Uh, item, a particular item number nineteen on rooms one-twenty-one, one-twenty-two, the, the foul sewage smell in the bathroom, is that come and go, Wayne, what's going on there?
Comes and goes, um, it's still there.
Are we sure it's coming from the drain and it's just not stinky kids in the bathroom?
Yes.
All right.
Cause even, even when s- school is out over the summer, there were no kids in there, we still had it.
And those drains are self-priming or?
They're supposed to be. Um, Dan, do you know if they ever did the information that, uh, Steve June had requested?
Uh, the information being, was a smoke test done on the vent pipe to check for leak?
Or just snaking it? Have you even staked it?
I have not, not aware of the trade, um, trying to chase it to that degree. I'm not sure how, uh, well, again, it turned, if the problem is not closed, it's not closed, um, wants a further review.
All right, so we'll get an answer on these green items and we'll have a revision and discussion on these, uh, on Tuesday next week. Item twenty, I'm going to pass over the green ones, Wayne, unless there's something in particular you want to bring up. Um, if not, I want to stick to the items that they're saying is not complete.
That's fine.
Good with you, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, item twenty-five, uh, uh, you know, screw, again, we're missing a screw here, keep going. Twenty-eight, we have s- uh, sink waste pipe, yeah, we talked about that.
Same condition, right?
Yep. All right, uh.
Let's get to the top of the page.
All right, uh, by the way, Wayne, the problem we're having with lights, uh, over and over again with the parking lot lights, we're not coming out at the wrong time, they were on all night, is that all been resolved?
On my way home, I got a call from the neighbor saying that the lights are going on at four o'clock in the afternoon still, and they're coming on at like three or four o'clock in the morning again. So off the top of my head, I'd say no, but I will go over and see, you know, if something got out of whack on the time clock before I.
Aren't those on a, aren't those on a photo cell and on a timer?
They're on both, I believe. They're on a timer for certain times, but then if the, if the light is, um, if, if it's too light out, photo cell will keep them off until it gets darker, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Dan?
I would have to do it, I know that there was a controller, but I don't know the detail.
Yeah, I believe it's timed, so they're powered at certain times, but then they're also, there's the, when they're powered, the photo cell takes precedent.
I, I don't know if this is, if that's still on the list anywhere, but we, you know, Dan, we've had a problem with this since the beginning of the project. Um, Steve June, I think that the research was done, and, uh, I think at one point we even had the answer on how that was set up and I mean, this is just not rocket science. I understand we had to build a system that works on the once every ten years when we have a full solar eclipse, but, um, you know, and if we're going to have a solar eclipse, maybe we just need to be prepared for it, um, but needless to say, this one just continues to just bother me more than anything else. All right, so the number forty-three there is, um, that's still being worked. I take it Ferguson is still on site working, correct, Dan? Or?
Oh, yes. Steve, um, I believe Ferguson's coming out on Wednesday. Um, he was going to check in his office to see if that light switch has came in yet. They ordered it, and then they'll swap it out on Wednesday.
Okay, uh, forty-five is look semi-green, so I think that that is, uh, not previously clear, but now clear. Is that, do I read that color code right?
Uh, no, it means that there's still a scope of work that we need to discuss, and in this particular case, the storage room needs a floor. But it's not covered because there was some sort of a change in scope. Since, actually, since publishing this, we've, we've discussed it internally, we want to, we want to just take care of the, putting a VCT floor in there. So it's not, it's not finished, but we're scheduled to work.
Okay, uh, fifty-two?
Um, so we have a claim here that there is no projector in the particular room noted here, B-one-fourteen conference room on the main level, uh, north end of the school, um, in the contract documents don't show a projector in that location. So I'm just making everyone aware of the, that fact, and that there was a, uh, there was a desire to add us a projector in that space during construction when Matt was still underway, but, um, but no change order was ever processed to make that change. So what you have in contract now is, or what you have installed right now is per contract.
Okay, at this, at this point, we don't want to do a change order to add that in.
Yeah, that's fine, but I was told three or four months ago that it was part of the contract and the unit was supplied to us as a spare instead of being installed, and we have no record of that. So if there's a delivery ticket or something that somebody signed.
The only thing I, I did find, Wayne, was, uh, was an email to, between Matt, um, Sean Williams and the technology contractor, uh, indicating that a unit that was intended for the OTPT room potentially.
Okay.
Um, that they didn't want that unit, and somebody trying to, somebody requesting that unit be taken down from the room and brought over and installed in this room. Um, but again, not contract work.
Okay. All right, and Steve June, if you, uh, if you think that that's not correct, let us know. If not, we'll assume it, uh, uh, that it is, but you would know because either A, we had a change order to it, or B, we, uh, and we would update our drawings, or B, it would be, uh, not in the plan.
I'll, I'll do my homework.
Appreciate that. And then number fifty-five, uh, this is not the water leak that we've talked about recently, this is a different water damage, right?
Yeah, just before I leave fifty-two for a minute, um, Steve J, when you get it, or June, when you get a chance, just read the notes on the side here. There was a, an SKT issued, but I can find no record that any action was taken on it.
Okay.
Um, so now back to fifty-five, this is, I don't know, uh, exactly where this is.
This, this is the, uh.
Oh, this is the door.
Conacoustic has ordered this door.
Yes.
Um, unfortunately, I had to wait, um, I was on quarantine for three weeks, so I hadn't been down there. Um, but, uh, I did get the door number and Conacoustic has ordered it.
Okay, and we have an ETA on when that would be installed, even close, any idea?
I can find out when I talk to Morgan tomorrow. I'll ask about that door as well as the, uh, change out of the, uh, was that the safe room door, whatever you call it?
Yep, the, uh, little lower on the list, but there's one other door, uh, that we'll speak to.
Uh, the next item is an electrical box that, uh, needs to be powered up. The, uh, this is work that belongs to Action Air because it should have been powered off the control panel of the chiller. And so there were two issues involved. One was to, uh, create a hole in the, not, or create a way to get to the convenience outlet, and now we've discovered that the, the outlet's not powered. Um, I don't have an ETA because, uh, I didn't realize that it was, uh, Action Air's work. I'd been pressing, uh, Ferguson to get it done until I saw the, the, this scope of work specification assigned it to Action Air. Relatively straightforward, I just have to get an electrician involved to, uh, if, if Action Air doesn't react quickly.
Hey, uh, flagpole, how crooked is this flagpole?
It's significant, I mean, it's clear, Steve's seen it.
Yes.
Well, they made some. Yeah, they made some effort on it last year, so I'm not sure when, uh, you know, when, when you guys looked at it last.
No, it didn't look any different, um. Every time I pull in there, it hasn't changed. I know they straightened the one out, the middle school. But this one hasn't changed from the original, you know, in two thousand and nineteen. If they did, it's not significant that you can notice it.
It was, yeah, it was actually work that I had them do when I was involved at the, with the punch list last summer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve, I, I, to answer your question, I put a laser on it, sighted it up, and it's about an inch, inch and a quarter, almost inch and a half, um, depending on how the wind's going, um, from the bottom to the top, so, well, you can see it.
What's, yeah, is it, is it, is it not, you know, uh, I don't know what the tolerances are for flagpoles, but uh, is this one where Gerber can, is it possible it's not the mounting, just the flagpole itself has been?
It's a tapered, it's a tapered pole, so it's a, you know, it's, what, what is that, Wayne, about thirty-five feet?
Yeah, something like that.
So you're, you know, you know, if it was a structural steel, you'd be in tolerance. I can see it.
But it's definitely, it's, it's noticeable, you, you know, it's.
So I guess the question is, uh, can they just replace it?
It's, it's not the pole, it's the foundation.
Okay, can they shim it or something underneath?
Uh, they, they've come back to me and said that's the best they can do. And again, this goes back to, to last late summer, early fall. I can ask again if it's not acceptable, I mean, that's, it's an inch and thirty-five or thirty feet.
Uh, Steve June, what's, uh, you know?
There, there, there could be settlement from the foundation, uh, you know, was the, the count, the ground compacted well enough? I know you said you did go out there and tweak it. I'm wondering, you know, hey, now, now it's probably the foundation that's, uh, uh, probably moved and we need to tweak again.
So this one.
That's a possibility, you know, it's worth investigating.
Hopefully they can fix it. And, and we'll get, you know, again, this is one of those things where, um, I have to go and take a look at it myself, but I can't, if it's bolt, i- is it bolted to the foundation or how is it mounted?
Yeah, it's got bolts.
Uh, put some washers on one side underneath, I don't know, I mean, it, it shouldn't, it, maybe it's not that simple.
You know what, Steve, Wednesday when I'm, I'm there, I'll take a look at it and see if it's something simple enough where we can loosen a couple bolts and try and kick it. I'll look at it.
That way it can come off the list, uh, sixty-four?
So we're unable to find the concern of, of, that put this on the list?
There's, uh, FRN, it's coming out of the brick. When they did the original, uh, power washing before the school opened, they were supposed to wash all that off. They did everything they could reach from the ground, the parts that were up over the roof area above the gym and stuff. Never got washed.
Yeah, I noticed that the last.
Okay, so it's not the original, we get confused, Wayne, when you say the original, um, wash. You know, when, when masonry gets initially installed, of course, it gets cleaned. Uh, what you're referring to is efflorescence that occurred, you know, potentially up to a year after the wall was built, especially if it's the cafeteria, because that's the addition. And efflorescence that.
Well. Correct. Correct. And they, they, the agreement was they were going to come out and power wash it all. They did come out and power wash a bunch of it. But only where he could reach with the lift. So the section that was over the roof area of the gym on that back wall. Basically, it's the outside wall of the ramp.
I see. So facing the condominium complex.
Right. And again, inside the entryway was not washed. I was out there with. Matt, two days after he washed it, and there was all cobwebs and spider webs and everything else up in there, so that area was never cleaned properly.
So it's, it's, it's not an original clean, it's a re-clean. And it's efflorescence and just basically construction.
Right.
Clean.
Yep.
Well, it's, was unclear to us and now we have to take a look at it and see what we can do to.
You're gonna be out Wednesday or whenever, I'll can meet you there and show you.
We're gonna spend the whole day together, Wayne.
Cracked and chipped curbing is, it seems to be one of the, you know, sensitive issues here.
Yeah, Dan, let me just chime in here for a second. You and I had a, probably a thirty-minute discussion about this the other day on the phone. And. And you can go over kind of what you learned since then. My understanding is that the, the actual concrete load tickets. Yeah, granted, there's some turnover personnel and things that, that there were some that were located, but the, 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 the. Concrete load tickets in question that we were not able to find. Our understanding of this is that, that a complaint was made about the time that trucks arrived in the morning and. That led to some discussions as to how long those trucks were, from when they were loaded to when they were poured. You and I had some discussions about testing and pulling cores. I'd like to go ahead and turn that over to you. I think you've been able to do some more research since we talked last week. So with that. You know, and one of the things I just want to point out to the committee, that some of you were not on the committee at the time. Is we're talking about curbs and sidewalk areas here. We are an integral, integral curbs. Not any of the structural foundation. Footings or anything with the building, all of that concrete was sent off. To IMTL for in, testing in accordance with the requirements of the town building official and the state. That is all well documented, that concrete, this is. We're talking about some curbs and sidewalks here. So Dan, why don't you go over what you've been able to find out and what the various approaches are?
Well, the. I did not find out if we can do a ping test on the surface of a horizontal. That may be something Mark or Chris has had some experience with. What Steve and I spoke to is, is ways to verify concrete strength. If the, you know, the, the punchless item is a statement, cracked or chipped curbing is difficult for us to, you know, or to manage. You know, if something is chipped, it's not likely that it happened. As a result of weak concrete, it's more, you know, from damage, from surface damage of some kind. We're not disputing that there is some chipped curves out there, whether that occurred when the building was still under construction. And would fall under a punchless item, or if that occurred in the subsequent winters. But the bottom line is, if there's a claim here that the concrete's not met strength, or that the concrete is substandard in any way. That's something we can sink our teeth in and work. But the only way that I'm aware of to verify strength of concrete is to take a core and have it broken. And that tells you whether it's, you know, it's still at four thousand PSI or, or not, and I. Chris, or, or to Mark, have you ever done a ping test on something other than a foundation, vertical foundation wall?
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't, on a horizontal slab. They're, they're not gonna do it. The best, the best way to do is do an actual core, get it sent out.
Yeah, the, the reason I brought this up, I asked the question about, and Steve June, Mark Jeffco, anyone on the call here, or any committee member. You know, the, the question came up when, when, and the superintendent has brought this up several times saying, hey, there were pores done off of trucks. And again, knowing what truck poured exactly where on what day is not an easy thing to try to reconstruct a year or two later, but and. The, the, and I asked the question, I said, what is the actual? You know, concern if concrete was on a truck for fifteen minutes or half an hour longer than it should have been from when it was. Put on the truck to when it was poured, what would the result be? And, and what I asked ONG to do is, hey, you guys have people that, you know, that. Concrete is their only business, that, you know, you guys have concrete specialists. What is the, the impact of that? And, and how would we know if it was bad? And the answer I got was that we would pull cores, you know, we drill out cores of chunks of that concrete. Obviously, we go back and repair it, so that it wouldn't be holes in the concrete. Send that off to a lab and have it, an independent third-party lab and have it tested for strength. If in fact it meets all the, the strength requirements and Steve June, you'd have to tell us what the requirement was for the, for that concrete. Based on the design, if in fact that meets those requirements, great. If it doesn't meet those requirements, then we would have to go back and look at some type of. Either A, you know, the, the extreme would be we rip it all out and have a report. The other item would be that we come to some type of an agreement with the contractor. So I'd like to get some discussion on that. I don't know how many cores we'd be pulling. And, and how long that would take. So Dan, if you want to lead and then let anyone follow in behind that.
Unfortunately, you know, having inherited this list and, and not really understanding, except when I did walk with Wayne last summer. To, you know, to get an extent. Wayne, without putting words in your mouth, we pretty much walked around the, the main lot. You know, on the, what would be the west side of the building. And Wayne was identifying chips and cracks in, in curbing, you know, all over the place. So I'm not sure how to describe, you know, that scenario. We, we finish projects all the time in which we have to go back in. Because we occupied a parking lot prior to substantial completion, and we do patching to, you know, to curbs that may have been damaged. How we approach a problem that doesn't have a limit, I'm not sure.
Well. This all came about because of the final pour. And a resident complaint. And I went out there to see what was going on. And he had been an engineer. Dealt with a lot of concrete and gave specifics as to how long it should be on the truck and whatnot. So I did ask for the load ticket. I was showing the load ticket. And concrete was based on that load ticket when the information he gave me was on the truck a little over an hour longer than it should have been. Now, at that point, I asked Matt for load tickets, which he said, yeah, I have them, no problem. Mike Brendan said he had them, no problem. And now all of a sudden, nobody has them. And as you know, we are getting a lot of chipping along the curb and not just in areas where it's plowed. We're seeing it on the walkways down to the back, where there is no vehicle traffic.
Well, wanna, you know, a couple of pieces of information here is that it's the latter pour. Unfortunately. You know, the load tickets are not available any longer. When I went to Torrington one time and I saw in Mike's offices, he, you know. Had a couple of spaces that he was pulling boxes and things. There was, there was some tickets there, but then when I went back to. Our dry storage to see what he had actually boxed up and put away. There weren't. So. Getting back to where and, and limits for what may be a problem. We would really need to do an assessment of, of what Wayne is seeing to see, you know, you know, if we have. How to put some sort of frame around the problem.
Dan, what I can do is I can put this ball in my court. I can contact the civil engineer. With all the information and then see what he comes back with for a comment. Instead of going back and forth.
Yeah, appreciated. Anything we can do to. To look at a, a site of that size and that square footage of, of placed concrete. You know, how do we, how do we get to an end?
Yeah, I know, this has been dragging on for a while. So, yeah, I, I think if I talk to the civil engineer and get his comments. So I'll be in contact with you, Dan, and also with you, Wayne. So one of the things I'd like to get on this, and maybe even if it's a third part, or, or if the civil engineer has someone that's a concrete expert as well, is. If in fact. That so, some of the trucks had the concrete on them too long and they were poured, and we can't necessarily identify exactly what would the. You know, what would the symptoms of that be? Would we see what we're seeing on that? Maybe get some pictures and things. And the big thing is the strength of that concrete. You know, my understanding in the few discussions I had was that. If the concrete cured early on the truck instead of in the ground, that we would see concrete that did not meet the PSI requirements for strength. So if we, if in fact, we, you know, again, every single pore, my understanding is different because of temperature, humidity. You know, all that affects every single pore. So the question is, does the concrete meet the standard? For the project that was set by the landscape, not the landscape, but the. You know, the, the civil engineers that designed the site plan. If in fact it meets that. Then we can get into discussion as to what's causing any of that shipping or does need to be repaired. But the first thing we need to know is, does it meet the standard? And if it doesn't, then we look for a way to rectify that or compensation or whatever it may be. But I think pulling those cores does make sense because there is a question. That the real answer is where do we pull them from and how much of an area do we think? You know, Wayne, if you were out there when they were doing those pores. You know, what areas were they so we can pull the right samples?
I was only out there for that last one. Was that last section in the preschool from the road down to about where the playground is?
Alright, and just something to keep, keep in mind there, it, wasn't that the area that we modified the plan and poured late at the end?
Poured in right after school opened or just as was opening.
Right, because we did a change there to widen that to a two-lane area to enter. So we know the scope of the area, we can pull cores, we can send it off, and we'll determine whether or not we actually have a concrete problem. Or at least we'll have a better feel for it, how well it's gonna hold up. Because we can't, it, it looks to me like we're not going to be able to answer the question of where are those load tickets? There's no contractual requirement to provide them. Or to retain them, so. Well, I think that is an approach.
Wayne, I got a question. Obviously, I wasn't on that job, but was that coballock that poured that?
I don't know who it was.
It wasn't either, Chris. Like coballock, but not coballock.
It's the builders?
No.
No, builders isn't down there.
What do I want to think, Jolly? I remember. To get their, yeah, I was trying to get their tickets.
Well, let, let's get, guys, let's get Brian Bakuda, the super that was out there involved here, right? Let's, let's get Brian to call and get some information from you as well.
Okay.
If there is a question asked, and the town has questions, and whether it's the, you know, the superintendent. Wayne, anyone else in the town has a question about the, the, you know, the long-term, you know, that concrete's supposed to be there last thirty, forty years. Probably longer. We should, if there is a question about that and it was brought up at the time and we still haven't resolved it, what, a year and a half later? Then we should pull those cores and get the, and, and, and at least we'll know the strength of the concrete if nothing else.
I think that's a good approach to you. I think at least we'll have that knowledge base behind us and then any assistance Steve can, Steve June can get us. From MMI's experience with, with this type of issue would be beneficial.
Well, we won't have this resolved for next Tuesday. What I would like to do is at least have a plan moving forward and what our intentions are. Alright, with that, I think we're, the sidewalks, that's related to the same. And we're on seventy-one, wall needs work. I'm not sure what that means.
Yeah, that's actually what those two items were open because we were unsure what was going on.
Well, seventy-one is. I'm not sure, to be honest with you. It's an exterior door to the lower level. The one down the end where the, all the water's coming in, the leaks are. So I'd have to actually go down there and take another look at it. This is back in, again, in June of two thousand nineteen. So I can update you on that information. I'm not a hundred percent sure exactly what that is. The other one is the FM units. Basically, what they did when they installed these, this is for the. Hearing impaired of the microphones for the teachers. They're just dangling on a wire out of the ceiling. And they really should be some kind of two-sided tape or something and either attach to the wall or. You know, as, as they move around, they're gonna start chafing on the ceiling grid and stuff.
Do we know what the, what is the design called for?
I don't know.
No, I hadn't done any investigation on this, did not know what that was.
Well, before we, you know, beat up, you know, on installation of this one, we should know what the, you know, even if. If it was not a good design, either we fix it ourselves, in that case, or we paid to have it fixed. I don't want any more change orders, but. You know, what is the design or is that something that's field, you know, decided? I don't know. Are they functioning, Wayne?
Yeah, I believe they are. But then again, that goes back to the issue with the microphones. Because we're not, most of the teachers don't have the microphones because. You were in the meeting with Matt where he put it on the, on the table in pieces because. Barely touch them and they fall apart. He was looking for a more substantial unit.
And now that's a function of just a, the spec item was not of the best quality.
Yeah, I believe so.
Alright, we'll find out about these units. Moving on to the third sheet, Dan. We got a few items here. I think ninety-eight is the first one that's not green, is that right? Oh, no, eighty.
So we have some incomplete work that's. That we wondered what GU, we wondered why they didn't install the, the hose bit fitting. That, that goes next to the custodial sink. And the, the word I got from the field was that GU didn't, didn't want. Whatever was specified there to be installed. So we haven't really investigated this any, any further.
Yeah, I was reaching out to Grutton Utilities and they haven't gotten back to me yet.
And as a coincidence on the project I'm at, I have their backflow department scheduled here on Wednesday. So I plan to show them the contract document, the proposed backflow. Or RPP device, and then you'll see what, if they have any issue with that. We have several sinks with this condition, so I'm not sure. It's, it's, it may appear more than.
Dan, it's, Grutton Utilities was gonna require a backflow preventer before it went into the chemical dispenser. At all these locations.
And there is a little RPP backflow device. Showed that, that Dev owns, that Eastern Energy. So I don't know what the history is there, and I'm gonna show them the, the as-planned product. And then if there isn't an issue, it's an open item. If there's no issue with Grutton Utilities, then Eastern is gonna be. You know, ordering these radon fans for the Gallup Hill School. I had that conversation with them last week. You know, she'll take care of these items as well.
Alright. Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight is a, is a repair that was done that, that doesn't come up to snuff, so we're taking, taking another crack at it. A chip in the wall, essentially.
One twenty-five, is that similar to the other executions we had?
One twenty-five?
I'm sorry, one oh seven, wrong, wrong line, room one twenty-five.
Uh, yep, same.
Okay, the projector is one fourteen and the speaker one fifteen, both the same glycol leak?
Yes, product is actually, I confirmed today, has arrived at, at our vendor. He said that he can come out any day next week and deliver it.
Alright, my understanding of that is we're not gonna install, we're just gonna take the unit when it fails from the leak, then we'll swap it out ourselves, correct?
Correct.
Alright, same for the speaker, or are they gonna put the speaker in?
Same for the speaker.
Same, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and the last page. Alright. I think we're at one twenty-two at the top. Oh, no, I'm sorry, one twenty-one. Alright, now this is the padding. When we, this is the issue of, on the stage, correct?
Correct.
Alright, didn't we, Wayne, didn't we get some extra pads for that?
It was supposed to be, but they were never installed. There were supposed to be another twelve or eighteen inches of pad on the top of the uh of the stage.
All right, and this was so when the kids are playing basketball, they don't run into the stage, right?
Correct.
Okay, Dan, did Noble agree to that? Was it a kind, was it a change or what what was uh?
It was a verbal discussion, I understand, that occurred in the field um. With Matt and and you all or with Wayne, but I don't know, Noble's position is he's not aware and does not. I shouldn't, I shouldn't put words in in, Chris, have you had any follow up with with Noble?
Um I have and I'm. Yeah, he's he says he's pretty much did what he's supposed to do, but when we walked in, Wayne, if we take those pads and reverse them. So the long leg is on the horizontal, not on the, I think that's what we agreed to.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that. I think that would accomplish the same thing.
Are they Velcroed on? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, if that works, great, we can get that closed out. That seems like it's been there too long. Uh and the exterior door, when the wind ripped it ripped it open, um do we uh is that lucky you have that for action?
So that um closer was delivered, Wayne, to Gallup Hill, I'm told, from Morgan.
Okay.
Um and then uh I'm going to swap that out on Wednesday.
Okay.
The harmonic, so you're going to get an actual of a whole closer for your attic stock. We're going to take the arm off the top and then swap it out.
That's fine.
That piece.
Yep, thank you. Okay, scheduled for Wednesday.
Yeah.
Uh similarly, one twenty-seven, we have some more patching that uh could be a replicate item, but we know where there's at least two patches we want to do.
Yeah, that's on the list for Wednesday as well.
On Wednesday.
One thirty-four makes sense as it's written and that'll be also this week.
I believe we got a floor stop in from from.
Yeah, I have to just confirm, Steve, that uh Morgan dropped that off as well and then we'll put the floor stop on.
All right, uh that gray bar after one thirty-six indicates these are safe room items, correct?
That's right. So I so I did that to note that there was a hundred and thirty-six items before and then. After we did a formal punch list review of the safe room work, uh these were the items that were generated. Still to complete are putting in door silencers on the doors.
Wednesday.
There's some touch up paint on the door handle uh on the lever set device. And a request, uh when we were there, we were looking at, you know, the the space used being a safe room. The hardware itself doesn't have, it has an opening in the top that we wondered if we could do something. To save that off, you know, just to provide one less place where a kid might might.
Aren't these closures like five and a half, six feet up?
Uh no, this is right on the top of the lever set.
Okay, oh, okay, I understood what you're saying. All right, thank you. I misunderstood it the first time when I read it a while ago.
Yeah, so we don't know what kind of device we could, you know, put in there, kind of like a. Kind of like a knockout plug that you'd use on electrical outlet box if it happened to be the right size. Um so we, I put it on the list because it was discussed and asked about and we still haven't had a chance to try to put something in there for you.
Or one thirty-six, one forty-six, the same, or one thirty-eight, one forty-six, the same? Just two different rooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh two chip tiles may or may not have been swapped out when we were doing the work before. Chris has to back check. And then uh and then the last item on the list is um, well, besides the hold opens, um was the. Interpretation of the of the proposal request, they provided a new door to the corridor with hardware on it that that doesn't make sense. So uh because it's not lockable, so the the whole room and and ancillary space is accessible from the hallway. Um we've kind of gone around the circle a couple of times to uh to get the door ordered, but it's finally ordered. And we're awaiting a replacement date.
All right, and that's the last page here, correct?
Uh yep, that's the last page, last item.
All right, so just uh as a general item, we've got um and and. You know, uh Mark, I know you've probably um seen more emails related to the HVAC system in the Gallup Hill School than anything else. Right now, we're uh where do we stand with getting that system done and turned over to. Uh lead yard so that we can um. Move forward. I know I still, you know, Dan's still having uh or Wayne's still having issues with uh. You know, rooms going splurish. I know there's a discussion about an extra thermostat that supposedly is in or not in the system. Um where do we stand with the HVAC system? And we did order some uh items, uh extra dampers and things. It turns out none of those were bad and then we found the two manual dampers that were not installed. Is that correct?
Uh well, there's a couple of things going on. The first is the dampers or the automated dampers, they were not operating properly and it was good that we replaced them. But the root cause of our, what we feel was the root cause was some manual dampers that weren't installed. To bring the just general knowledge of where we are, the after the system went through the last changes back, um. I'm going to say it was early March, that um that we were able to, in our opinion, confirm the operation of the space. Um at that point, the hot and cold complaints risk risk basically went uh went down next to zero, uh went dormant. Um and then we had a period of time in which uh things kind of settled out. During that period of time, we did identify two or three items that we uh still wanted to push for resolve. And that is um in the one classroom two oh one, uh we do have some temperature change across the space. You know, the exterior wall seems to take on some more cold there, so there's been some fine tuning being done uh at various times. Um and then the way the architecture of the thermostats around the building were installed and how the building was wired to a controller. Left one room short of a uh of a thermostat that actually provides a digital readout. Uh it performs the same way as all the others, but the architecture of the. With the control system won't allow for a digital readout thermostat in that location. But going back and forth with JCI to try to get, you know, what would it take to make that architecture work? Would it require, you know, rewiring a few rooms in order to make that happen? That's from hearsay, I guess would be the best way to say it. Too much work for the benefit because it is only providing a digital reload readout to the person in the space. That the thermostat in the room, you know, still provides information back to the BMS, still can be read on the BMS.
Hey, Dan, so let me just ask you real quick on that one. So when and and Steve June, maybe Marty's waiting on this is. When the design was done, did that thermostat was, you know, when I look at the number of connections? What did we change to add more connections to that system where all the rooms wouldn't have the same digital? Was was that room originally designed to have a digital readout thermostat? I do not know offhand. I can find out from Marty.
Oh, absolutely.
My guess is, yeah. So what's different? What happened between the design and the installation? Did they put in a. Uh a smaller board somewhere with fewer receptacles because they didn't think they needed it or what?
Uh it's actually more of a delegated uh design. In in other words, the architecture and and how many controllers that they place into the space and which. Units report to which control panel uh is part of, uh in this case, JCI's design. So when they were in the process of installing, they just made some decisions as to how to wire particular rooms. It is something that we do want to push for. Uh I'm still certainly pushing to. JCI has not been relieved of the responsibility to fix their architecture, you know, be it replacing wire or doing what they need to do. It's the uh it's our contention that it's it's not built for plans and specs and that the trade would need to repair it.
Is that, hey, Dan, is the is the specific thermostat model called for in the design?
Yes.
And is that the thermostat that's installed?
There's, I I would say no, that there are multiple types of thermostats allowed in the spec. Um certain areas take digital readout and the classroom would fall into those areas.
All right, well, it it just seems to me like uh this was one now, the extent of what JCI needs to do to make that happen. You know, somebody obviously made that decision along the way to uh to. And I'm not saying cut a corner or anything, but to make that decision in the field to to do it that way. Um it it seems to me that uh they didn't get anyone's concurrence to change what uh Silver Petrocelli's engineers designed. Um so that's JCI's problem, not Lead Your Public Schools' problem.
That's right, and that's, you know, that's one of a, one of two things that that I still have on their to do list. Um prior to what I feel now is a is a properly operating HVAC for the central zones of the building. So we're not quite out of the, you know, we're not a hundred percent. The couple of people that we hired uh directly to get that work and find and root out the the issues related. We're still awaiting their closed up documentation and then incorporating that in the as built of of JCI's work.
All right, so and since you brought up as built, uh when, all right, so we've we've just discussed with getting all this work done. Um so I'd like to get from uh from from you, Dan, is a is a estimate on. A when do we really think all this will be done? Uh that's on the the remaining list for Gallup Hill School. What is our target? Um and since it's obviously not done by the end of April. Uh and what is the anticipated arrival for all of the things that are outstanding to go to Wayne as far as. Documentation manuals, training videos and as built. When do we expect to have that so we can say this project is done?
Uh with respect to the as built, we've assembled the as built package. We've shared it out with the design team. We haven't gotten comments on Gallup Hill. Ledgerd is middle school's been back and forth and issued. Um so is uh any last of these, we wanted to incorporate the last of the HVAC updates, but the rest of the. The balance of the O and M systems manuals are are digitized and and ready, we need to go to the printer.
I can get that back to you tomorrow, Dan. I've had it for a few days. The final engineer got back to me, so I'll get that back to you.
Then we'll make, you know, we'll make the necessary, you know, changes and updates or missing items. Um and turn that around. So availability Steve would be, you know, in the two to three week range. Oh, you're muted again.
I'm sorry, when will we see the final application for payment for the Gallup Hill School?
The only change that's uh that's pending is I do have the uh back charges to Action Air. I have the two costs I just mentioned to uh to do the independent reviews, testing, balancing. Um and then I have a a hold open line item for uh for reducing their contract based on the pain and hardship. Uh principle here. For me, I've already done all of the remaining legwork as far as uh closing out the contract value. And can issue the change orders for returning the CM contingency and adjusting the final fees and uh. Uh insurance costs. So if there's a decision that, you know, that we want to take the pain and hardship to. And and set it aside for a discussion as far as how the the last bill actually gets funded. Um you know, we can put that off and I can produce the final document. If there's um if. You know, if we want to hold off and and I can finish the cycle, there's two things involved. Besides that, uh I can do this, I should say it differently. I can do it in two bills, in which case I would like to release. The funds for the trades that this list gets reduced to. So right now, there's, you know, there's a series of trades. On the bottom line here, you say what their projected contract amount is, what they've been paid to date, what their available funds are. In some cases, uh you know, they're far in excess of what the potential uh. Remaining punchless items, but the due process properly done. We we clean this list up, we know what's what's uh what's still outstanding and I issue a set of, I issue a bill. That is not to one hundred percent, but includes all of the dollar figures. All all of the monies to the trade with the exception of the dollar figures remaining on the punch list. And then I do one final bill uh that that resolves the, you know, the HVAC and CM contingency and and. Turns back all the funds, closes the dollar value.
Uh that that's that's that seems to be probably the best way to go. Action Air is the biggest concern here. And then the other issue, and I know you and I had a discussion about this is. You know, the the additional cost of the town has incurred specific that are measurable costs with respect to. Um Silver Petrocelli Associate uh cost for Marty, the design engineer to go back through. Uh we would not have experienced all that cost if Action Air had uh done their job and installed this correctly. Um and one of the things I'm going to have in discussion next week is uh, you know, looking at what those costs were, they're they're readily identifiable and easily identifiable costs, their time materials. Um and you know, what in it would appear to me that we would have to potentially go outside. Uh because the contract with SPA is separate. Uh unless Owen uh Action Air agrees to a reduction in their fee that would cover that. I can't see uh the town would have to go after Action Air outside of your contract, which would be a mess.
Agreed. Right now, we have adequate funds within funds not paid to them. Um as compared to what's, you know, outstanding left, you know, it should. It should we find that on this punch list, everything but a couple of items are done. There's only. You know, they're they're remaining, if I was to release up to, you know, to what they have left to do, it'd probably be releasing up to two grand. But I'm certainly not going to release any funds in this next position to Action Air to allow this process to come to closure.
Right, and and because we're not there yet and we we don't know if there's other things that have to be done, so if we can get that. Uh in the interim uh and, you know, Action Air, you know, the ball's in their court, they can decide to take a reduction in their cost. Um you know, with the understanding with the town has incurred cost be and not to mention, you know, it it's hard to say, well, hey. If they were the only contractor outstanding, there was no other work and we could have closed this project out three months ago. The town could make an argument that your failure to do your job right meant that we can't follow the state for X number of more months. It's really hard to get your hands around that additional cost of a town. Uh you can make arguments on either side that that's not what the delay was. But in the case of of actual directly attributable costs of having to pay. Uh an engineer to go back through and prove his design was correct and that it was an installation. Uh and a balancing problem, which is all in Action Air's court, I think that's reasonable that we would ask them to uh. To assume those costs, so. Um if you have any comments on that, great. Um if not, I think the course that you described was reasonable.
I have to agree, and I think that if we do get this list back to me, at least with. You know, uh again, I appreciate Wayne getting it back to me as early as possible, but by by midweek, then we can put together a bill that's. That's everything but these last adjustments and I'll bring to the committee at the next meeting. You know, the change orders to reduce our our contingency and close out our fee. And hopefully have some decision as to what the order of magnitude is um to Action Air.
All right, uh we have exceeded two hours. I know, I think it's not.
Before we leave Gallup Hill, I got a couple of items.
Uh, good.
Thank you. Um we still have some. I'll say significant issues with the HVAC. Uh we're down to basically three rooms. Uh one sixty-eight, which is the one with the thermostat that has a heating issue problem. Um could never get that room to temp. It was always in sixty-three, sixty-four degrees. Uh we're still have a electric heater in there. We're running, was the only way we could bring it, even close to temp. Uh you have two oh one, which you did mention, which is an overheat issue. And that has been consistent to get marginally better when we put the dampers in. Uh but it still continues to run about seventy-six degrees. Um JCI is saying that is a shoulder issue. Um but they keep making changes, but the temperature in that room does not change. Um they say, well, you know, reducing the outside air temperature, so it brings in more fresh air and everything else. But the room is still maintaining seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-five degrees. Uh starts out about seventy-one and builds during the day. And one sixty-eight, which is the noise issue through the uh chilled water pipes that's occurred since the glycol leaks. Um I don't know where we stand on those. Um Chris, any update on the art room door where all the laminate is peeling off?
The the art room door?
Yes.
I the only one I was aware of was the cafeteria door, the right hand swing of the cafeteria.
When we walked the building, you took pictures of the uh art room where all the laminate is peeling off the end and the around the lock.
Oh, oh, that's down in the um.
Yeah, down the lower level.
Yeah, I'll I'll make that repair.
Okay.
Yeah, that that's not a, that's a simple repair.
Okay, what is the status of getting the roofs cleaned? All the construction debris, screws, fittings?
Okay. What is the status of getting the roofs cleaned? All the construction debris screws, fittings, whatever's up there?
We'll get those off on Wednesday.
Okay.
There's been a lot of work on that. Well, there's been a lot of, uh, solar panels and stuff installed up there.
This is, with the solar panels were not installed.
It's elsewhere?
Yeah, it's on the lower, on the renovated section.
I'm gonna walk it then.
Yeah, and that's been on the list since June of two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, I thought we had.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, just take care of it.
The, uh, what about the, uh, support for the TVs in the kindergarten and pre-K?
So Wayne, I, I was out there with Con Acoustics and there is blocking at the lower level, I think the the SK or whatever you want to call it, call for blocking at two foot six off the floor. Um, it did not call for specifically the SK for the blocking at the projector height. So the blocking is there for the, um, what do you call it? The whiteboard or whatever it is. So.
Why did they, why didn't they, what, then why did they install an untoggleable?
The blocking isn't there for the projector at that height. It isn't. But the SK for that only called for it at the two foot six elevation in.
No, there, there was originally supposed to be blocking in the original design at a higher height. And then there was a change order issue to move it down when the TVs were moved out.
Correct. And if you look at the SK, it causes specifically to be at the two foot six elevation. It doesn't call for it in the, in between. So they did put in the blocking per the SK.
So who designed it wrong? So the blocking's in the wrong spot? Steve?
No, the, the blocking is for the, uh, for the item. So I mean, it's the, the block is meant to hold up the material. So why would you put it at, you know, at a bottom height and not at a top or height?
Steve, pull out your SK and, and then you, you, you'll see why they did what they did. All right.
I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Uh, what about the toilet paper holder in the, uh, in the same, in that pre-K room?
One that was, somebody kicked in. I'll fix it for you on Wednesday.
Didn't kick it in. That was before they occupied that room that was on the list.
Okay. I'll fix it for you on Wednesday.
Where do we stand on the lower level hallway that's leaking and the water's coming in?
We have to investigate that with our exterior guy.
Hey Dan, that, that's kind of a, a, you know, it's not a specific item that, that does, that needs to be on this list and tracked. I was actually meant to ask you why that wasn't on the list. Uh, I, now, one of the things that came up on this and Steve June is that we didn't touch that wall in the scope of work. So, and because that was an unoccupied area before, we don't know. Um, there's no way to know whether it was leaking before or not, but the fact, oh, it is, that's that one. Okay.
I'm wondering if this is what this is, Wayne.
Um, could be.
Yeah, but why is it kind of acoustic? Well, we don't know what the cause of a leak is.
Right. So this was a sign because I thought it was, you know, wall finishes or something, but.
It's possible.
Now, if during construction, this had been noticed and that we had no scope of work in that area, what I would expect to have happened is we would have either, you know, excavated the exterior of, outside that wall. We would have done something. There would have been a change in the scope of work to deal with water intrusion there. Um, because, you know, Wayne, we didn't really do anything on the exterior wall there, correct?
As far as I know, you didn't.
And that, and that was a storage non-finished, non-occupied area prior to this work. So what I would like to see is if we, if, if that was detected early on and we had that problem, that there would have been a change in scope and we would have excavated that wall and looked for where the water's coming from.
Uh, but I don't, I'm not sure if that wall is buried. I think it's buried below where the water's coming in.
Okay. Well, we, we, we need to figure this out and figure out whether it was something that was done during construction. It was an existing condition, whatever it was. So we can get it resolved just so we don't get any more damage from the water coming in. Um, and I'm not exactly sure that the approach to that, but once we can identify that, uh, we'll make an appropriate course of action. But, uh, let's modify seventy-one to, since we weren't sure what that is. To in fact be that, uh, because that exit by zero one one, that makes sense, right?
Yeah, I, I don't think I would have coded it that way. I think it'd be more something on by the, the wall, but it could very well be. I can't say it's not.
All right.
And I would, and I would like to say that, you know, if certainly we can try to do something remedial here, but if it's an extensive scope of work that we're talking about now removing earth to expose the foundation and try to find potentially a, you know, a crack in the foundation that's, that's whipping or weakening or wicking. Um, that's what I'm seeing when I see the, the rust on the steel structure on the inside. Um, and that.
Right, but I think that's above the foundation wall up into, or just below the block. So I don't, you know, I'm not seeing it coming in. That's why I say, I don't think it's below grade or it might be buried at that corner. But I think that corner is over the, um, the paved area right outside the door.
Well, let's, let's figure out what level it's at and can, and find out what's going on. So we can figure out whether this is something that should have been addressed during the project, was created during the project. Or it was just something that was not in scope work.
And the, I've got one thing back at LMS that I gotta mention, but um, one item is the cost of the radon testing. Uh, that was supposed to be picked up by the plumbing contractor. You know where we stand on that. I'm getting to the end of my budget year. And if I don't get those funds back from somebody, uh, I'm gonna lose the opportunity to use them.
So this was, um, yeah, this is an honest, um, you know, oversight by the plumbing contractor. So the cost is going to come from our side already paid. Uh, whether it's ONG or, or I can squeeze it out of the plumbing contractor. But the last we talked was that the committee was, or that the, that the towns, the town was already funding those bills and needed to reimburse Wayne. And then somehow the funds would be taken or held so that they weren't paid twice by the town.
All right. So Wayne, in order to get that through your budget in, in the current, um, go ahead and uh, submit those to Marcia Hancock for a transfer across the two.
That's fine.
And then we'll just take care of it on our side and, uh, we don't have that, uh, uh, we don't have the, uh, in-year issue.
Yep, that, that's fine. I have no problem with that. Um, and just digressing back to LMS for a second. We've been having a problem at Juliette Long with water hammering. We're now having that problem at the middle school. Um, and I've had experts out there from valve manufacturers and they're under the impression that the pressure reducing valves installed at the middle school, uh, are too small for the function. They are already tapped all the way out, full adjustment. And a little bit of information I've gotten either from Dan or Steve or somebody was that when Grun utilities was out there, they didn't want one larger one installed. They wanted two smaller ones. So I'm not sure if they installed two smaller valves or what. Um, but we've been able to trace it back to the situation at the middle school causing the problem. Um, because the only time it occurs is when, um, toilets are flushed at both schools at the same time. Juliette Long flushes, there's no problem. If the middle school flushes, there's no problem. But when they both go off at the same time, it's causing this, uh, water hammer is actually going out and affecting the homes in the area also.
Have you, uh, have you reviewed it with Grun Utilities? If it's a service problem, um, you know, they would have some experience.
Yes, I have. And they're putting it back onto the schools. Um, and they, they, they asked us to put in, um, hammer arresters, basically an air tank bladder to take that up, which we did with no change.
Wayne, if this is going, if this is affecting two schools and affecting the community, I have a feeling that it's uh, the, the problem is probably bigger than what we have in the school. But either way, we installed the system per the direction of Grun Utilities. Uh, and if that is the case, the plumbing contractor did their job. Um, and I think this is something we have to resolve that may not in fact be, uh, you know, this is, may not be an ONG school renovation project, uh, issue. Um, this is something we have to work out with Grun Utilities. Either way, we're gonna, we're gonna pay the cost of any changes at this point because the plumbing contractor did what they were supposed to do. Um, and, and maybe we need to get Grun Utilities back involved since it affects multiple buildings. And it's, you know, they could have made changes in that, uh, water main pipe going up and down route twelve that is causing this, uh, you know, a change in their pressure. Um, but I think, uh.
Well, this is an end align, so the pressure on that line is just over a hundred pounds. So they, we have to cut it down dramatically.
All right, I understand that. I'm just saying that we installed with Grun, the Grun Utility, I remember that change when that occurred. And Grun Utilities directed that. We paid additional cost, if I recall, uh, to have that done at the time.
Okay.
So, uh, we can't beat up the plumbers that did what Grun Utilities insisted on. Um, but either way, we have to resolve that issue. And there's no issue, uh, at the, uh, Gales Ferry School?
No, none.
Um, it's interesting.
Yeah.
Have to take a look at how those lines all come off of each other there. Okay, uh, Wayne, do you have anything else to add here on this punch list or?
No, that's pretty much it.
All right, uh, we only have one, I'd like, uh, an opportunity for anyone, uh, to make any comments on the Linger School improvement projects. Uh, before we do the last agenda item, which is, uh, probably gonna be moved here in a minute. Uh, so anyone that's on the call that wants to say anything, uh, this is an opportunity.
No, I think just as far, just a real quick question for Wayne. The, uh, as far as the, 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 the heating issues, heating cooling issues at, at, um, at Gallup. Is, is, is it isolated now to room one sixty-eight and, and two oh one, based on the three items that you've?
Well, we haven't, we haven't really had the chillers running yet, so I don't know. There were air conditioning issues last year. So we don't know if they're been resolved with the installation of the dampers and stuff. Um, but to the best of my knowledge, where I was getting the complaints during the heating season was one, um, one forty-eight, which is the one with the, um, thermostat and two oh one. Uh, one forty-eight was, could not reach temperature and two oh one was over temp.
That's right. Okay. And Dan, I'll talk to you about getting, uh, somebody else involved from our office here to look at that. Another MEP coordinator to to see if we could delve into these two issues and, and get them resolved. So, all right, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
All right. If no one else has anything, uh, this was a long painful meeting to go through that punch list, but, uh, we've needed to do that for a while as a committee. Um, and, uh, with that, we'll move on to just, uh, number eight. I have nothing new on the high school track and field from the town. So unless anyone has anything new on that, um, I'm still waiting on approval to move on with the, with the scoreboard and the fence. And other than that, uh, I think we're good, uh.
Hi, excuse me, Steve. Uh, Dan, could I ask you to email me, um, those two punch lists so I can have them for the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And, uh, if there's nothing else, uh, I move adjourned.
Um, Steve, the next meeting is that, uh, is that out now for, to the regular meeting? Or are we gonna try to do something interim?
Uh, I think based on the results of the meeting on the eleventh, um, we may try to do something. Let me look at my other calendar here. We may try to do something around the sixteenth, uh, so we can get some bills paid.
Steve, I just want to let you know the seventeenth is the town meeting.
Oh, really? Great.
Um, that's Monday, the seventeenth.
That's the budget meeting, right?
Yeah. And then they go to referendum on the eighteenth.
What time is that? What time is that meeting?
They usually do it at seven. I'm, we don't even have it posted. Um, hold on one second. It is posted. Hold on.
We could do that meeting to pay the invoice, uh, and do a special meeting on the, uh, on May six, seventeenth. All right. Well, we could do a five PM meeting. Uh, you have to be at that meeting, correct?
All right. What was that? I'm coming back.
You and your town clerk capacity or assistant town clerk have to be at that meeting?
Um, I do not have to be at it. Patty does, but I don't have to.
Okay, uh, so we, uh, at this point here, I'd like to shoot for a special meeting on the seventeenth just to, uh, get that invoice closed out and be able to pay some bill. Uh, it would be the only item on the agenda. It should take, uh, no more than about twenty minutes.
Okay. So we'll shoot, we'll do that, schedule that then.
And we'll, and it was just sent us something to confirm we can get attendance while the quorum where it's not worth having.
I will send out an email tomorrow.
All right. Dan, did that work for you?
Thank you. Yes.
All right. And, uh, with that, I move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
Once time.